What's this? Can you make me a couple of these, like three, just black and white, no colored background?
Sure, that big or?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, okay. The, with the aerial background or no background at all?
No background at all, just black and white.
Just black and white and just the supers?
Yep.
Okay, do you want, there's colors for different sizes?
Um, no.
Do you want the colors on there?
No, because all I'm gonna do is mark what's been lined and what years.
Okay.
And then, um, I want one that I can mark out trouble spots.
Okay.
For the next person coming and then one is gonna be depth zone.
Okay.
Freeze.
Yeah.
Put anything in black and white, cause he does so much up here.
Yeah, trouble spots, like the one I spent three and a half hours working on yesterday.
Hmm.
Got through it finally, but it took a while. Now, maybe whites don't plug up, maybe whites from three rows.
Yeah, but they're flushable.
Yeah, but flushable.
That's right.
A lot of stuff is flushable.
Yeah, you, a lot of stuff is flushable, shouldn't be flush, but is flush here.
All the major city council special meeting, Kennedy agenda Monday, April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five, fire thirty P M, council chambers called. Patrick.
Here.
Cabal.
Here.
Holy. Russell.
Here.
Morgan. Motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Patrick.
Yes.
Cabal.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Two, the lobby center, Shell and Jim. Moral support.
Yeah.
Um, so I went through and, um, looked at when Jim and I first talked with going into this next season. Um, and looked at the surrounding pools and where they have their prices set at, et cetera. I found that we really didn't need to increase or anything with that area, cause we're still pretty well even with everyone. Um, so then that took me into a deep dive.
I can talk to you just as I.
Yes.
James just texted me, asked us to call him.
Oh.
And Dave just pulled in.
Okay, Dave just showed up.
James texted me, asked us to call.
All James and Dave's coming in, so.
Talk?
Just a minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to know if you're live.
That's close.
Oh, I could've gave you this number. I didn't know where you were. I said, I thought you were calling.
How many is this, James?
Hi, James.
Thanks for calling.
Sure.
Shell and Jim are just going over the proposal for the swimming pool right now.
Okay.
Um, so, one other thing that I looked at was how their facilities, um, did their swim lessons. Where last year we ran into a lot of, um, times where we had to do makeup lessons and with rain days and all that. And it was hard for us to go into the next week with that week's lesson starting and coming up with a makeup day, um, for the previous week. So, one thing that I would, um, like to do is, um, take an hour off of the daily time, uh, Monday through Friday. And then add that on, um, where we're open longer on Saturdays and Sundays. So, in the past, we had, uh, opened up at eleven. As the summer went on, um, I seen where the participation, everybody was kinda, oh, the pool's been open. And kinda died off to where they weren't showing up in the morning hours. So, I would like to have Monday through Friday, twelve to five, and then open back up for night swims, six to eight. That, uh, allows us to do swim lessons in the morning where we can change and move to a four day schedule. With each session lasting forty-five minutes instead of thirty. And then we can use that Friday, um, as a makeup session. And it provides the flexibility for the families to be able to still continue that week versus coming back another week. And having to make up those lessons. Um, spoke with Jim and he agreed with the hour changes.
So you got a lot of, you got a lot of staff time tied up, you know, a lot of payroll going out without anybody there swimming from eleven to twelve.
Um, so that takes care of number one and two. Um, so then I did another deep dive into how we compare, um, with starting wages to those surrounding communities. Um, Greenfield, they just have a normal hole in the ground pool, nothing special to it. And they start out at twelve fifty for their lifeguards, um, and ten dollars for their starting admissions. Moving up to Adell and Winterset, um, they are much larger pools than what we have. Um, Adell starts at thirteen and, um, eleven for admissions, whereas Winterset, um, they start at fifteen. Gutswee Center, uh, they're a comparable pool to us and, um, they start at fourteen. You'll see that their hours aren't very conducive to the public if you look at, um, that other sheet that I gave you. So, I mean, for them, they're not, they don't have the hours where their staff is there. But yet they, they're probably one of the higher ones that I found. Um, so this data indicates, uh, continued need to assess our wages to stay competitive in attracting and retaining qualified staff. Um, I have several prior staff that do not wanna come back because we don't pay enough to keep them. Um, we, you know, essentially pay for them to have a two-year certification. And they don't wanna come back that second year because of our wages. Um, I also have, um, I, this is my fourth year. And I have one person that has stuck it out with me the whole four years, uh, and that is Zelena Morse. Um, she's gonna do June with me, but she leaves for the Air Force, uh, July eighth. So I'm losing that experience, um, there. Going to my three-year, um, lifeguards, I only have two of them. I asked one to be my lead lifeguard this year and he doesn't want to because he can pay or make sixteen bucks an hour out of Quick Star. So there I'm losing experience as well and someone who is very good at doing swim lessons. Um, so we currently start out our lifeguards at eleven bucks, um, in our pool house for eight fifty. Um, Zelena, with her being there the longest and being a lead lifeguard, this year, her wages would go up to twelve dollars and thirty-two cents. And that is not even what Greenfield start at.
How many employees do you usually employ during the summer show?
Um, I try and have eighteen to twenty lifeguards, only because we work around sports. Um, we have baseball and softball throughout the summer. Um, and then as time goes on, um, we have sports camps and whatnot. So I do like to have an overabundance of lifeguards because they essentially get burned out towards the end of the season. And we drop drastically with kids going back to college and all that getting into August. Um, this year I had applications coming out of the woodwork for pool house. I have a lot of eighth graders that applied that are gonna be freshmen. Um, I have three returning, um, pool house people. Because my new pool house people from last year want to move on and become lifeguards, cause they're old enough now. Um, I am still trying to figure out what I'm going to do with fourteen applications that I have for pool house. Which that is a record number that I have seen since I've been here. Um, because right now, um, I can employ all fourteen of them, but they're only gonna get one day a week for the ten weeks ever here. Because I only need two a day. So, um, I'm gonna have to do like many interviews with them, um, to figure out like where I can go with some of them. Um, my thought is that I am going to go ahead and take my previous year. Like they are already going to start out with me and have secure jobs. But with my new ones, I need to see like who can do math, who can, you know, that sort of thing.
So, a couple more questions. Uh, so what's, what's an average work week for these employees? Like how many hours does a typical average employee?
We work ten to twelve hour days. And that's because we have swim lessons in the mornings or swim lessons at night outside of the pool hours being up.
Um, so I guess my next question, um, what do you propose? Uh, you give us the wage rate down here, what do you propose them for the pool house and the lifeguard?
Um, I thought I would check that out, but I guess I didn't. I would like to see us comparable with Greenfield.
I, I got a question on that.
Yeah.
So you got the starting wages for the other communities, do they have a tier like, hey, you start here and then if you come back next year, it moves up?
Everyone gets, so like Greenfield, I actually, um, spoke with, they, they have a committee down there. That proposes to the city council every year what they would like to see their wages be. So I spoke with this gal, um, Kennedy, I can't think of.
That's all right.
Who are not saying this. Um, she wanted to propose that they get, all get, even though they're starting out at twelve fifty. She wants a proposal of a four percent increase on top of that for their pay increase.
So if they come back next year, like you have one that's been there forty years?
And in the past, so prior to, um, this year for us, I came in three years ago, I think. My, my, one of my first years here and did a increase then that got us to this eleven and eight fifty. Because we were starting out lifeguards at eight bucks and pool house at seven twenty-five. And, um, so we got it to the eleven. Um, and then every year after that, we've done the city four percent for whatever.
Whatever house, whatever house.
Yes, whatever that increases.
But that goes back to they, other cities are doing that as well.
Correct.
I think you're asking is if Adell starts at thirteen, if they have still been there for nine years, are they still in the?
No, no.
Yeah, how are they getting bumped up, so?
It's the same cost of living.
It's the same.
It's the same for other employees.
I would, I would imagine that.
It's one thing to keep in mind too, guys, that this isn't just a concrete pool. I mean, where it's an aquatic center, it requires more staff, you know, to man the slides and all of that type of stuff. So it does take more employees on a daily basis.
If we kept the pool house, cause we have people right now, like right, I, I don't know about years past. But right now we have a demand at least for pool house. And assuming these little jerks all know that it's eight fifty an hour. If we didn't raise that, but then raised the lifeguard, cause that's the higher need, right? How would that look budget wise? I mean, I get that the pool is a loss opportunity, I understand that. So it's just how much further into the red do we wanna go, but?
Yeah, you're just increasing the loss, that's all. Uh, I don't, I don't have any calculation, but I just cut this now like you, so I don't know. What are you proposing?
I wanted to be at, at twelve, starting at twelve. My first year lifeguard starting at twelve fifty, like it's comparable to Greenfield.
Eleven now.
We, we start at eleven, but my prior years, obviously, there's a difference in there. I can pull up.
And what would you ask me for the pool house to start? What would you propose?
Um, I would even go up just a dollar, nine fifty there.
And how many live guards do you say?
Eighteen to twenty, that's what she needs.
Eighteen to twenty, two and a half a day.
Hold on, I have my staff list.
How many lifeguards a day are there?
Eight.
So we're talking eighty to a hundred dollars? That we s- hundred bucks we spend a day on lifeguards per person, right?
About a hundred and fifty.
It's a bit more given than taken.
What, probably fifty. So we'd be talking an increase of moving up a dollar fifty, your, times eight, that's.
Times twelve hours a day.
Times twelve hours a day.
And you're twelve hundred a day.
And I don't know.
So right now, um.
No, dollar, dollar fifty, I'm talking increase, increase.
Sorry, I bet you my wages.
But the council probably hasn't seen all the figures on the revenue and the loss, but they need that, have that every year. Right. I mean, it varies from twenty to seventy thousand dollar loss every year, depends on the maintenance.
We're, we're talking a hundred dollars a day.
That's a huge part of it.
Yeah, difference.
So my, um, highest paid employee for this year would be Zelena at, um, twelve dollars and thirty-two cents. My three-year. One of my three-year lifeguards, um, that's coming back, she's gonna be my other lead lifeguard. She'll make twelve thirty-two and then we start with my other three-year, just at the cost of living increase, she'll make eleven ninety. All of my returning first year, or they will be second year lifeguards this year, will make eleven forty-four. And then obviously, my first years would make the eleven if we stayed where we were. Um, I, my lead pool house person that has been with me for four years, no, three years, sorry. Um, she'll make nine dollars and fifty-one cents this year. And then I have two others that are, it's gonna be second year pool house people that are returning from last year. And they will make eight dollars and eighty-four cents.
So, I would hate to have your four year, three year at twelve fifty, make the same amount that your new ones are coming in.
And that was where, when we did an increase, um, in twenty twenty-three. We started out at eleven dollars and then my second year, um, lifeguards at that point went up to eleven twenty-five. So they got a twenty-five cent increase to offset their, um, being there.
They're around twelve thirty-two right now, right?
My lead, my one that has been here for four years is at twelve dollars and thirty-two cents.
So if you started brand new, it's off at twelve fifty.
That would need to be adjusted, my book.
And then, yeah, I'm, I'm kinda wondering, you know, if you did, and you, let's say you just made your four-year one twelve fifty right now, but then did four percent. That's like a fifty cent increase, that would be like thirteen, uh, that almost.
But then I have them as a lead lifeguard, so they're kinda, this is a manager in a way, like setting in, yeah.
But that's what I'm, that's what I get that, it's like, it doesn't seem like it's quite enough for four years.
Right, and that's what I'm here to ask.
And, and three years too.
Correct.
You'd wanna do twelve fifty for brand new. And then, that's why I say, you know, it's like, do they automatic, with, just without the cost of living, you know, just, is there a step up for each year? Is that something that needs to be looked at, maybe that would help?
And I know last year, we proposed at a city council meeting solely, and it was approved where we were seasonal workers. So my lifeguards automatically seeing their raise like at the beginning of the full season. So that was approved last year, whereas we wouldn't, it wouldn't start out and then see an increase in the middle of the season.
The increase is at the start of the season versus July, like everyone else?
Maybe if you doubled that for the four year, maybe the three year to an eight percent, that's a straight dollar increase. So what I, what I'm thinking, this is, this is my thought, you know, she said twelve fifty for new ones. So if you just put everybody at twelve fifty, like, are you sweating me out? Are you sweating me out? I'm just, I'm just throwing this out here for conversation, okay? So twelve fifty, everybody twelve fifty, then you give your, your longer time people an eight percent. That would give them an extra dollar to put in at fifteen fifty, so.
Or do you just do, if you, if you start at twelve fifty, year one, I know it's roughly fifty percent. Four percent, they four percent on top of that, they four percent on top of that. So, I mean, just ever years' experience, you take that four percent raise off of that base.
So you'd be giving the four-year one a sixteen percent increase this year? You don't wanna put your four-year at the same as you got your new ones coming in.
No, I, I know that, like, if we've always done four percent every year, like.
Well, it's whatever is approved for all city employees.
Yes, exactly.
Whether it's four percent, three percent, whatever, that's what we're at.
And maybe you're right, if we just, if we were to go down this road, maybe you just set twelve fifty, thirteen, thirteen fifty, fourteen, fourteen fifty, fifteen. Work for ten years, twenty years, you're at twenty-two dollars an hour, whatever it is. I, I don't know. I also like, you know, doing the math in my head and this, I mean, we're, we have, what do we have in our, our budget for adding to the pool? I mean, just lifeguards only, I, it's gonna be over five grand, just going to twelve fifty. It's going to. And if you add the pool house, I mean, I think we're ranging anywhere from five grand to fifteen, fifteen, depending on how many people.
I mean, with that pool house, I only have three that are returning, so that's gonna be in a clean slate.
And I think, you know, we need to think a little bit more progressively where we are getting like a better wages form. I know it's a, a losing proposition, but still, it is an amenity that people desire.
I have, like, they get tired of their job.
So if you start at twelve fifty, first year, second year, you gave them twelve seventy-five, third year, you gave them thirteen, fourth year, give them thirteen and a quarter. And the four percent raise, I don't know, I don't know, I don't, I don't know about a four, I don't know.
Well, that's, that's the thing too, if you get to just doing a quarter raise, then next year, if you set someone come in as new, they're making less than the, you know, starting out. Your first year, you're making probably like twelve fifty, but then with the four percent. I suppose you're gonna get a four percent on year two or whatever, but just bringing it in is a one year thing, or one time.
Or do you, or do you set that way to twelve fifty and then a quarter and then give them that twelve, or that four percent on top of that?
That's what Greenfield is doing.
Cause then you have your, you have your increase for your years.
Better tier.
Your tier. Yeah, you have your tier, twelve fifty, twelve seventy-five, thirteen, thirteen, a quarter. And then later.
Typically, I don't, I'll, I'll occasionally have a college student come back, like my, my other, my second lead lifeguard. She's a freshman in college this year, so, I mean, yeah, she's coming back and that's the longevity of my experience though. And that's the sad part, it's I just, there's no depth to, because not everyone's gonna continue with. So that hurts us offering swim lessons.
Which is revenue.
That's my two cents for.
When you get open?
We're hoping to open.
You keep going, you keep going and then I hope you have lines.
Um, I'm hoping to open May thirty-first, which is, um, the Saturday after swim lesson, or after training. Training, yes, lifeguard training. We have lifeguard training set up with the same guy that has previously done it like many years. Even though he moved to Kansas, he's coming back, I talked him into it, um, Memorial Weekend.
Okay, so Memorial, okay, so.
And then we have, so training will be for my recertification and for my two lifeguards. And my first year will be that weekend. And then we have our own training that we do, um, during the week. Uh, and also pool cleaning and like getting everything out and all that. So I have that, um, I don't wanna open, I don't wanna bring personal stuff into this, but my son is deploying. And he leaves the thirtieth of May, so I don't wanna do it that and.
I don't know, we need to watch on this, but I just wanna know the timing because I can, I see the council willing to do something about the wages. How about, have you thought about increasing that admission of the staff so we can work things out, we can add numbers to business? You know, we had a meeting here in a week or two, so just.
That's why I think why we wanted to at least put it on the special meeting is we get.
What, 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 I'm sorry, what are the, the admission things on there? Is it on here somewhere? I have just not seen it.
Um, not for us, sorry, I apologize, um, that sheet, I think.
I got my understanding.
No, um, so we are five dollars daily, three and up, um, and four dollars for seniors. Um, and then the sheet as far as memberships. We have, um, signups already scheduled for May tenth, so in two, two Saturdays.
That's definitely before the next council meeting, so if you're looking at changing admission prices, that's gonna be kinda tough to do.
I was gonna change, um, but it's. Oh, he wants to.
We lost about six.
I had, I just pulled, I just pulled it up.
Okay.
Um, so swim lessons are fifty dollars for public, eighty-five for private, thirty-five for, for preschool. Um, which are my three and four-year-olds, and then thirty-five for mommy and me, which are two and under with, um, a parent or an adult. Memberships, um, we have, I started last year the, the punch cards. Um, you get twenty punches for sixty-five, that gets you, uh, that saves you, um, some money there. Fifty-five for senior citizen, sixty-five and older, seventy-five for individuals. Um, a hundred and seventy for family with a Stewart address and a hundred and ninety for family with an outside Stewart address. Um, we do have our early bird specials that run through the month of May, which like it just takes twenty bucks off of, um, the family memberships. And ten bucks off of the, um, individuals. And then to add a family member, if you are over a family of five, it's ten dollars a person. And then we did a nanny babysitter add-on last year, um, which is an additional fifty dollars to. um, which is an additional fifty dollars to the membership form, and that is for, uh, or they go on that family membership.
So if you would like to increase that mission, these things, what you would.
I wasn't looking, because we were fairly comparable with everybody else, I wasn't looking to increase.
I'm trying to find a way to pay on me, but, you know.
I mean, some years we lose seventy thousand, some year we lose twenty-five thousand.
It's a loss, you finish.
Yeah, it depends on how much maintenance it is.
Last year, we had a big maintenance loss, but the year before, we didn't, so.
Biggest thing is, she already has her, um, registration and admission days established, and that's gonna be before your council meeting.
The librarian reached out to me.
Wasn't available.
With an available day and time, so that's what I had to deal with, unless I found a different place to do it, but.
Which is good, trying to see, just trying to be proud of that, so it's a loss of a wish, so it doesn't matter when you do, it's the better route. So.
But my thing is, Ash, you got fifty-one homes going out there, you got seventeen lots already sold, those people are expecting to have amenities in this town, just bring a tax base in. Yeah, I know.
You kind of surprised, but we'll go back to this when we go, okay, I think I don't see you, you're not going to increase that mission, which I appreciate. Okay, well, you can go ahead with your meetings and all this stuff that you can have, maybe by next meeting, we can have a meeting, a regular council meeting. We can give more of exactly what you're proposing and what you're making, all these things, would help you create the council to just give them an idea of how much it costs and all these things, numbers we can run easily, you know, you can have the current employees and how much thing you can mix to it, what propose that you would like to see and make a decision. And we already have the motion last year, we had the motion last year to get you paid when you start and all this stuff, so we're gonna have issue with that. And just trying to see, to meet the council to be more of.
We don't have that time, right? Do we need to have these salaries done before our next meeting?
Yes.
It would be nice, that's.
Oh, we're just on the admission prices.
No, I have, I wasn't proposing anything with the admissions, I was.
And you're gonna put them on public, which is what.
I already, yeah.
You're fine, I just, we have to keep up with the salaries.
Salary. We haven't done the.
We have, yeah, but she's already got the registration and stuff already.
And she's gonna go ahead and we don't get a change.
Right, right, we're not gonna change that.
Because she knows we're combining that, which.
Yeah.
But while she runs into on the salaries, is somebody's gonna, I gotta jump, like, come out to the grocery store this, what?
Yeah, I mean, I already have people asking me, like, my previous years, I kind of had to coax a couple of my second years into going out and working for me this year, why give them a little, well, we did provide you with a two-year certification, I would like to see you come back this second year. They weren't going to apply, so I at least got a couple of them to come back. We already spent the money on them as a city for their certification, so.
And how much that certification cost?
It's three hundred dollars a person.
For new.
It's like last year. Yeah, because they sit through the whole class, like.
I, I guess, I, I would feel better if we held off, and with no disrespect, but we should have probably been talking about this last month. So we had time to think about it, but just to shoot out the hip on something like this, I don't feel comfortable doing that. Let, let's talk about it, let's do what Ash was saying.
Yeah, well, that's what we, we can do though.
Yeah, let's, let's hear what we have to do.
I'm going to say to the council, may or four, may or four.
Without raising the nation possibly?
They're officially already.
You did, and now I want to say, we're going with her then?
That's what I just said.
The other things on the pool, it's coming back together, we lost one pump, um, cost of the pump was about twenty-six hundred bucks. So I did a little looking and, and changed things up a little bit, so switched that pump out for about eight hundred versus twenty-seven hundred. Got that, we'll set that tomorrow, uh, some painting to do, otherwise, we'll know more in about a week when I start putting water in it, circulating stuff, get pumps, the other pumps going. We'll have a whole lot better idea where we're at, but, uh, everything seems okay right now.
There's quite a bit.
But, but water and things.
Last year.
Yeah, there's a lot that kept.
Heaters and the.
Yeah, we put in two heaters, builders rebuilt.
That was all last year.
Thank you so much, good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Four questions, situation.
Okay, I, I just, I had a focus about, last week we talked about is, and we didn't really give a clear direction to the, uh, R C D A. So I was wondering if we could, the, the utility board gave a motion to approve its blowings and certified cycle. I was wondering if the council would like to have the same motion, just to blow it, where Matt is working with the, uh, on it, no talk about money yet, we just.
I'll be honest, I thought we, I was having the question, we kind of did that.
Without, without motion.
Yeah, but we did, so that's why we're here, maybe we'll have the same motion if you don't mind.
I mean, if that's.
Yeah, forget it, go.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me, I thought we could do it without a motion, but if you need one, yeah, I think, I, I removed that, so.
Sure. Move by, how long?
Also.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kawa.
Yes.
Dole.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Okay, five Wumble III addition trail, a terminal placement, Forrest, please.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Forrest Aldrich, convene string queue. And so this is for, just for the trail going from the second up to the cul-de-sac, and then also the turnaround at the west end of the community trail, so the, you know, some of the northwest part of Wumble. Uh, this work was done by Scott Concrete, and so that work has been completed. I have a few cleanup things that they took care of, uh, last week, and recommend taking payment to Scott Concrete, that's part of pay estimate one, this also allows the king to pay thirty-one days after acceptance, and then recommend that the city council accept the trail and the turnaround.
Need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moving second, how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Kawa.
Yes.
Dole.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Yeah, with the council.
Okay, six long-term.
Right, evening, thanks for taking time for a special meeting. Um, I really do want to try to keep this condensed in the discussion, so I, I didn't give a whole lot of detail behind, uh, the numbers here, but what, what's included on the, the second page, uh, right behind the cover, that's exhibit one. This reflects the impact of property tax legislation in twenty twenty-four, I think it was, and the proposed legislation this year. The twenty twenty-four legislation took away your, your twenty-seven cent library levy and your twenty-seven cent emergency levy. So that limited the city's, uh, levies, that therefore not only limits those individual budgets, but hamper or hinders your TIF revenue that's collected. So this is, this is kind of the problem scenario that, that reviews, if you look at the yellow shading at the right center of the page, including the long-term debt for Wumble third addition overall phase four, that's included in column H, with existing TIF paid debt and development agreements in columns D and E. Nothing yet here for White Pole Road, road in column I, that's blank, as you can see, the deficit is about a million two ninety-seven. Going back to the discussion we had at the regular April meeting, the city has right in the range of about a million of cash on hand to cover that. This deficit moves beyond the capacity of the city to cover that amount. When we looked at the, when we did their interim financing in twenty twenty-three for this housing base, that, that was around seven hundred thousand or so, so the city had cash on hand to cover it, with, through cash in your debt service fund and cash in TIF. With the lowering of the levy for TIF purposes, that doesn't allow you to cover that debt service payment, you, the city would have to put in place a debt service levy. So my goal, of course, is to avoid that. So what is reflected in the next page, exhibit two, is essentially a, a solution scenario. It reflects a restructuring of your twenty nineteen general obligation debt that funded, uh, four projects, the primary one of which was the All Saints Housing Project. There was storm sewer work, sewer lining, and a street project, including that financing as well. So this, this, that reflects the restructuring in column F. What that allows, uh, the city to do, that deficit, that is reduced to roughly two hundred and twenty-seven thousand for those, those five yellow shaded years. Again, at the right center of the page, so your cash on hand pretty comfortably, uh, covers that through the restructuring. There's a cost, though, with restructuring that debt, that is, the twenty nineteen debt is not callable until June of twenty twenty-eight. So it, it's assumed that you would restructure and extend some of the maturities on that debt. That'll have a cost on average of about thirty to thirty-five thousand per year during the period of time that debt's outstanding, that averages it out. That's a drawback, obviously, but it does allow the funding to be covered through the restructuring, considering the cash you have currently on hand, it's not future cash, it's cash you currently have. So that's one look at the financing situation. What is on then exhibit three, the final sheet? It includes not only the financing for housing phase four in column H, it assumes, I, you're very preliminary from what I understand, in terms of the White Pole Road project. This also includes the, the financing for White Pole Road, I, I think I basically assumed the twenty twenty-seven financing. So with that being included, the deficit, and I'm just focusing there on the years where there's a deficit, that's five hundred and forty-one thousand subtotaled at the bottom rate. So again, with that being included for White Pole Road, in addition to the housing phase, you're, you're able to cover that with, uh, TIF cash, the debt service cash that you had on hand between those two points. So just wanted to keep it in summary form, if possible, because I, this could really go on for a while, but I don't, it's a special meeting, I'm trying to be respectful of your time, so.
And this is just based on if, and I know it's kind of a, it's a big if, it's still a, if they pass that, what's down at the state house, right?
That's right.
If, if that happens. Um, has there been any more on this? Aren't they coming to the close of their session?
This is pretty soon, it's supposed to be their last week for the current week.
Okay.
And I understand from the League of City, Iowa League of City spokes, that it's probably gonna happen. Is, has it happened yet? No. So it's not, you can't say it's a definitive.
Right, I don't want to sit here and say, well, it hasn't happened, so we don't need to worry about it, you know, that's not my, that's not my point.
I think if it, there is such a drive for profit tax reform, I think if it, and, you know, bottom line, who knows? It's hard to say, but if it doesn't happen this year, there seems to be a pretty decent chance it could happen next year.
Sure.
Or some version.
So we want to let it taken care of, so, um, just to understand that the twenty nineteen debt, that's at a pretty good interest rate, isn't it?
It, it's, it's, it's right around four percent, I think, on average. The, your, the city did a refunding in twenty twenty, that's, that was the six million dollar financing that refunded the first two housing phases, and then there's funding for the police department in that one as well. That one is at, a couple, one of the maturities is at two percent, one's at two point three. That one, it'd be great to not touch that one, so, because it's at such a favorable rate.
Is there any other option besides refinements? Can we pay some of this off?
It's not, you can pay it off, but it will be paid off over time, none of, none of the debt is callable right now. So it'd just be a matter of having some other cash source to pay it off, instead of the city, um, capturing new TIF revenue to pay off the debt. It's such a large problem, but, uh, it's a large challenge to undertake, so I think if, if there is a solution to it, it's, it's almost, I think the most plausible solution is for you to restructure between the nineteen debt, because any other solution is kind of just nibbling at it in small bites. Some form of a restructuring, I think, would need to take place.
Now, do those figures include the, uh, that thirty-five thousand refinancing fee, basically, or is that without?
It, it's, it's included in there, it's an all-inclusive, uh, an all-in review, yes. I think today, tonight is really just informational, um, and we can, I can get into more detail at a future meeting, but this is, um, and maybe you're at such a point too, where the legislative session, if it's gonna happen, you might want to have clear knowledge that that's gonna happen, if they're gonna do additional profit tax reform. There's such a drive for it though, it seems like it's almost inevitable, unfortunately.
So, let's talk about the White Pole Road here, so it might be in our best interest to drag our feet on that a little bit?
If, if they're, I don't know what the timing is on that, in terms of collaborating with Guthrie or Ada County's, but ideally, if you could not undertake that financing until twenty twenty-seven, your, your piece, the city's, if, if the city is open to doing that, uh, that late next year, really, mid, to mid twenty twenty-seven would be great.
What do you have to say, Jim?
Uh, yeah, on that topic, I had a conversation with Josh Seaburn, method county engineer, on Wednesday, last Wednesday, and they were going to Senator Nun's office, Congressman Nun's office was going to accept, um, numbers again for a grant, but it had to be turned in by Friday, so they were going to use, that Friday of that week, so they were going to use the numbers they already had, um, with a little bit of adjustment, but Josh is not looking at anything happening with White Pole Road until late twenty twenty-six, early twenty twenty-seven, at the earliest.
So we're gonna be about right there anyway.
There may be some structure we can do around that too, work with the county and stuff, so.
You know how long, I, because I don't remember how long that project, they were assuming that would go. Were they gonna try and pump that all out one summer?
Yeah.
One calendar year?
Yes, one calendar year, yeah. And that's including our portion of the storm and, and, uh, curb together type work, so yes.
I couldn't remember how that was gonna be, if, or if it was gonna be phased out.
And, and I'm sorry to get off topic, why, why are we talking about, about White Pole? So I was looking at that proposal, is it concrete all the way through? What I saw was concrete here, and then some milling and some, like asphalt or something, then more concrete, and then asphalt.
Yeah, it'll be a combination of concrete and asphalt, yes, yes.
What's the city's cost share in that, or proposed, requested?
Forrest would probably have more, you remember those numbers?
I don't remember those numbers.
Because I don't either, I know, we're looking at our shares half. Because Guthrie County would have a quarter, and then Dare County would have a quarter, and we would have the other half.
I'm not sure if any of the counties agree with Dare.
Yeah, I, I neither, yeah.
They, so they didn't originally, right?
What?
Either didn't originally.
I, I don't know if they agreed to.
I, I think, the last time I heard, they told us, or told the county, or, no, they're not gonna do it, so we have that.
So then we would have three forests and eight. So then we would have three fourths and then Guthrie County would have a fourth, right?
Exactly. Yeah. So, um, back to, uh, this.
Better.
Business, um, is there any way we could benefit if we had any cash that we could pay down the Wumble, phase four?
That, before, before you go in the long term, yes.
Would that benefit us?
It would, it would benefit you, um. It's, it's so much more needed. So if you look, so if you're just on, looking at exhibit three, and then right, right below the yellow shading, though, that's the net TIF available each year, if you focus on the gray shaded Eric Rose in the future. The city, um, over time has an awful good amount of TIF available, but the timing is a challenge. So if you, if you reduce the amount of the long-term debt, that would help, but you would need, it would need to be something like two to, two to three million to make a really meaningful impact, because you want to reduce the debt service payments through, this includes White Pole Road, we're focusing on reducing the debt service through June one of twenty-twenty-nine, that's really where it's needed. And reducing the long-term debt by two hundred thousand doesn't really have a meaningful, it helps, sure, but it doesn't have a meaningful benefit. Um, in the both, in the grand scheme, I guess, so.
We're gonna go, go back to talking that nasty word of increasing the levy. I mean, that would, that would have helped out, because you brought that up at one time about maybe increasing one or so.
Yeah.
And I hate to talk like that, because that's, nobody wants to interfere with that by no means.
No.
That's, is that, that's not something we can do now, okay, is it, or is it?
You can for fiscal year twenty-six, but, um, as I had mentioned, I think at the April fourteenth meeting, that, that insurance borrowing that the city does every year, those are eliminated as part of this property tax reform. So the city, you, you were able to get a lower overall city levy by doing that financing for the insurance, because you got to apply your certain insurance cost toward the broader tax base, which included your tax increment valuation. And ended up with a lower levy, uh, that type of financing most likely is gonna go away, I think after July first, so. So that, these are, I'm pointing these out because they're factors frankly outside of the city's control. The property tax reform, the lowering of the school levies, which is the actual TIF collections, and the reduction of the, or proposed elimination of the insurance borrowing. Factors outside of the city's control, you know, unfortunately.
So hopefully by next regular meeting, we'll have clear idea what's gonna happen.
On the property tax front, yes. Indeed.
But this can be a new position.
Uh, no, no, it's, um, trying to just get information laid out so you can have time to contemplate it, so.
Should have you as a person.
Well, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Where are we at on the package?
Um, I've got some work done, but we're, they're not done yet. I wasn't planning on presenting it even tonight.
Right. Because I know a couple of weeks ago, we were talking like by the next meeting, we're here in a couple of weeks.
Well, at the last meeting, I was talking about the regular meeting.
I know, yeah, at the last meeting, we were talking about it, and our next actual scheduled meeting, I think it would be done. Frank, it's good news.
Good luck.
Forrest is like, ah!
And what's your opinion?
So.
They are working, they're out there fixing some concrete panels, uh, last week, so.
That curb section has been replaced, that was damaged.
Right, there were, by no, like, I noticed, I noticed that.
Yes, that has been replaced.
Okay.
So they are making progress, just.
Is anyone responding about that manhole panel? Imagine that.
Matt, how are we dealing with lots?
Well, earlier it was said, said, you know, fortunately I had one builder back out because of the, uh, uncertainty with lumber prices and some other issues, but, so it's down to fifteen, but we've got fifteen lots. Uh, to, for purchase agreements and some deeds that already been, and started the process. So we gotta get their building application for permits processed. So we're waiting for plans yet, but, uh, so definitely thirteen of them have been.
Chomping at the bit?
Yeah.
There you go.
I, I had assumed a six-year build out with that phase, so fifteen out of fifty-one, that's not quite, but it's almost third. So that suggests a three-year build out, maybe four. So I assume six, uh, in the numbers you got tonight, so.
At our, at our next meeting, or when were we gonna bring up that whole idea of the lots with the, um,
Reaching, uh, the things.
The catch and bonds.
So I know, Jim, you were looking at, we kind of said, if there's something that can be put in there.
Still, yeah.
I'm still looking at that.
There's still research in that, see what's gonna fit back into that application.
So, and I think, I don't know, I know for me, if some, if we can do that, chomp them off and whatever, you know, pick them off there, get them going. I'd be all for that, you know, it's just knowing, knowing what we can put in there so we don't have to pay.
Will, will, will your guy know by next meeting?
Yeah.
Perfect. Perfect. Yeah.
Still gonna be a maintenance thing though.
Yeah, it will be.
And where's it gonna go?
Yeah.
It's gonna go to us.
Is that something, I know obviously, uh, time will tell with personnel, but is that something that you would think that maybe we should just longer just hire out?
Depends on, depends on the maintenance, because depending on what's put in there, it could be burned off once a year. And, you know, basically left to its, uh, left to its own. So you wouldn't have a lot of maintenance in it.
That depends what it comes up with, but, yeah, depends what it comes up with, and it might be, like Dave was saying, it might be, might be a little bit cheaper to hire it out as opposed to not getting that tax revenue on getting houses in there. So I think that's the most important part is getting some foundations off of lots.
So the interim financing from twenty-twenty-three, you, that provided twenty thousand of money. You already have that money, in other words, for mowing up the lots until they are sold. Twenty, twenty thousand and, are you talking about?
We're talking.
All saints?
We're talking about the lot on All Saints that contains the storm basin and then also the three lots, four lots in phase four that the storm basin is affecting as well.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
That's, that's all, yeah.
And Forrest, is there a click for data damages on all, or what's going on?
No, we need to get the project done and talk about that.
Okay.
Go.
Thank you all for coming.